Call the order of a regular meeting in Goodyear City Council, 27 August 2007. Would you join me and Councilmember Vice Mayor Antoniak and the rest of the council in a pledge of allegiance and invocation, please?
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, on mission and God invisible in the liberty of all.
Wow, I felt like I was back at school tonight, listening to that pledge. Join me in the invocation if you wish by bowing your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, as we come back together after two months, bring this mayor and council together with a renewed sense of vigor and attention to detail as we go about protecting the safety, health, and welfare of our citizens. Protect our employees as they carry out that mission and our public safety staff, as well as the men and women serving us overseas during these days. Give us the fortitude and wisdom to make decisions that are right and just, that represents our citizens, and most of all this evening, protect them on their day-in-and-day-out commutes and drives around our city. Lastly, I'd like to say good evening to our mobile residents that are joining us remotely, and amen. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I'd also like to welcome Mayor Rogers from the city of Abindale with us today. And again, those from OPO will be witnessing this, just like any one in the city of Goodyear can witness this particular council meeting, so join the Vice Mayor in welcoming them. All council members are in attendance this evening. We do have the council payable for July of 2007 to approve and ratify. Are there any comments or questions on those?
Mr. Ring, I have reviewed all the bills and find that they are of fault in order. Do I move the day to be accepted as presented?
Second.
Okay, a motion and a second. Motion from Councilmember Souza, second from Councilmember Lord. All those in favor signify by stating aye, please.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, seven to zero. Well, now moved to communication. We have two items. One is to present a plaque, plaque and certificates to the nine-and-ten Little League champions in the state of Arizona. So, we're looking forward to doing that. And then we'll do follow that with recognize and express our appreciation to the CERT training class. But Jennifer, if you'd start us off with the Little League. Okay, Troy?
Mayor, City Council, at this time, I'd like to present to you our nine-and-ten Goodyear Little League baseball champions.
What we do whenever we have people in our community who do something that's superb and deserving of acclaim, we ask them to come to the council meeting. And we like to give them certificates or a plaque. But what we really want to do is say, "Thank you for representing the city of Goodyear so well." And to take care of you, so. All the other coaches. You want the coach? Nope. Oh! One of the best times of my life as a Little League coach, so I envy you, and I certainly respect you also. But I'd like to read a little statement for you, if I could. And this will go on record for everybody. Fifteen, twenty years from now, they'll be able to see this, okay? But when I say your name, would you just raise your hand, so everybody here knows? Okay? I'm gonna do it real quick. Okay, whereas a Goodyear All-Star, nine-and-ten-year-old Arizona District Two Little League team have become the newest Arizona State champs, and whereas it could not have been possible without the talent of the players. John Barret, Benji Cabrera, Eric DeLeón, Vincent Essig, Victor Reynoso, Eric Figueroa, Devin Fowler, Danny Gomez, Chaz Miles, Albert Ramirez, Noah Critchfield, and Adrienne Mohica. Okay, well, I'm gonna continue, but y'all came. Thank you very much. Whereas the leadership comprised of coaches Victor Reynoso and Paul Essig, and manager Paul Barret was instrumental in guiding this outstanding team to victory, and whereas their two models from the beginning were, "Do my job" and "One pitch at a time," which led them to a thirteen-win and one-loss record. And whereas Arizona District Two is comprised of eighteen Little Leagues west of I-17, thereby making Goodyear All-Star team the best in the West, and whereas the city of Goodyear is most proud of our team for their hard work and commitment and striving successfully to be champions. Now therefore I, James Cavanaugh, mayor of the city of Goodyear, do hereby proclaim August 28th, 2007, as Goodyear Little League All-Star Day, given under my hand in these free United States and the city of Goodyear on the thirteenth day of August 2007, into which I have caused the seal of the city of Goodyear to be affixed and have made this proclamation public. Congratulations. We need to have the certificates, and then we're gonna let your coaches hand out the plaques, is that all right? Or shall we do it currently? Okay, I don't have the names here, but I can read them from here for you. Okay. Okay. John Barret. Eddie Cabrera. Eric DeLeón. Victor Reynoso. Chaz Miles. Vivian Michael. Eric Figueroa. Vincent Essig. Albert Ramirez. Noah Critchfield. Devin Fowler. Danny Gomez. Coach Paul Essig. Coach Victor Reynoso. Manager Paul Barret.
Also mayor and council, to commemorate this great achievement, we will be putting up a bronze plaque at the Goodyear Community Park where it all started. And again, thank you very much for your support. Little League appreciates it, city does too. And it sounds like the kids have T-shirts for you to commemorate this great achievement as well, so you guys can all be part of the All-Stars.
Maybe we see you all in William Store in Castle, Georgia.
Thank you.
Nice job, man.
Thank you very much. Excellent.
Thanks, Jack, for coming, guys.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
Great.
Great memory.
Thank you.
Remember that for the rest of their lives.
Oh, yeah.
I was gonna say, when we start talking about-
How I see you, Marie.
We start talking about council chambers later on in the next several weeks, remember events like this.
Marie, now I can see you.
If you get this done faster, at least have a temporary. Yeah, there you go. Stained glass window.
We're gonna wait for the CERT group to come back in now.
The what group? Let's get this started before they get back.
What? I keep saying, "We leave the city hall." You're right.
No, you notice it kinda went off on me at that point? Yeah, it's interesting how that works, isn't it?
Here comes our safety team.
Thanks, girl. Pretty school dressing, though. How are ya? No, I mean, why are some of them this beautiful?
They have their official gear on.
Oh, I didn't know that.
That's what they wear when they go out to a scene.
I see. I see.
How good you are, honey. Maybe it was twenty-two or something.
How come this guy's name is?
Thank you.
That's the first time I've had my name spelled out.
For you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Good for you.
I got it. Yeah, Gloria. She flows with glory.
Oh, it's so exciting.
Okay, well now moved to recognize attendees from the CERT training class, and Tim Nugo, you've got it.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and to council, how are y'all doing?
Good.
It gives me a pleasure and honor to actually bring our CERT trainees here before council and the city staff. Just so y'all know, they went through ten weeks of training, and this was an enthusiastic group. Instead of going one night a week, they decided to go two nights a week for the month of June. So, we just wanted to bring them before council, introduce them, and when I call up their names, I'm sure I'm gonna mispronounce a few names, but we're gonna ask if you all would stand and keep standing till we finish each name, if that's okay with mayor and council. All right, we have part of our group. We have Craig Bossgeider, Hannah Bradbeer, Russell and Cheryl Bryant, Edna DeFord, Jennifer Fawcett, Beth Hatton, Kim Hopkins, Lou and Linda Lewis, Linda and Michael O'Brien, Nancy Schaefer. Okay, Patty, pronounce your last name for me. What they said. We have Roger and Estelle Hooper, Darlene Brown, and Jean Reynolds. Now, this is from our CERT two class. Now, we wanna also recognize, I wasn't here for the first class, but from our first class, we have Jim and Teresa Orloff, Mike Mahoney. What's her last name? Whitkowski, right, exactly. We have Sharon Carlson, we have Gail Bossgeider, and Mike West. Now, I just want to, and just for you all to know, if you haven't gone through CERT training, you would like to get one of these vests. It only takes ten weeks with us, and we'll give it to you. But I want to also, mayor and council, I want to recognize Bob Marshall and Linda Diller. While I was gone, please stand, this is Bob and Linda, while I was gone, they made sure they're the ones that took care of the first class while I was gone. But I just want you to know that when I came back, Chief Gaylor told me, "No, we will be doing this CERT class, we'll be doing it right away," because we had an enthusiastic group, and they put in a lot of time and a lot of effort, and we just wanted to take the opportunity to bring them before you, mayor and council, so you can see the wonderful group of people that we have in the city of Goodyear. Along with that, they're so enthusiastic that the majority of them have decided that they want to continue their training to become train the trainers. So, when we have additional classes, they will be training the new volunteers that are gonna be coming to the city of Goodyear. So, we just want to recognize them and their enthusiasm this evening, and thank you all very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. How many hours did they do?
It's supposed to be a minimum of a twenty-hour class, but I believe we did, because we included-
Thirty hours.
It was thirty hours, because they included NIMs 100 and 700 along with it. And at the very end, they have to do a mock exercise to give them opportunity to do the training that some can attest to.
This is the second year I've done it, and this year about my husband, we were both victims. So, I want you to know I feel very secure. That I went through the course, I know that I'll be well taken care of, and I thank all of you for all your effort.
All of us do, and I went to one class, I know it was a long class. You dedicated a lot of your time to us, and we thank you very much for that, and I'm sure all the fifty thousand people in Goodyear are thankful also. So, thank you, and we are sincerely appreciative of your desire to help your fellow citizens.
Great, thank you very much, and thank you, opponent.
Better use them as an agri, actually.
Have you done this? No, we'll do it together. You can do the victim, you be a victim.
So, you have this kind of fun where they kinda trail in and out.
Well, we don't even have an audience.
I know, now we're, none of us can party and pontificate, we don't have an audience.
Emergency response.
Yes, I am. It's gonna be a long one.
He just makes statements, I ask questions, he makes statements. No, no, this guy makes, this guy does dissertations.
But he's sitting on this side.
You're in rare form tonight, sir. He's in rare form tonight. Why, what did I do? Just remember that. Nothing.
I know.
For all the attorneys entering the room, we won't be celebrating your presence tonight. Sorry, couldn't help myself. You doing it? No.
Okay, we'll continue with the meeting and move to six on our agenda, opportunity for citizens to address the city council on any non-agenda item. So, if you'd like to ask a question or state a point on a non-agenda item, now is the time to do that. Okay, Gary Gelzer?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm back, I missed you.
My heart is fluttering.
You know, I had, you know, it was two months of no city council, I had withdrawal symptoms. But previously, two months ago, I did address the council about an issue of public safety that I felt very strongly about, and the mayor was very kind at a special meeting to let me talk to you about it. And I've come back and I've looked at the area of concern, and I believe that this has not been addressed to what I consider my satisfaction as an average citizen. Now, traffic engineers may disagree with me, but what I wanna do is show you a series of pictures of what we are talking about. The area in question is Pebble Creek Parkway, heading north on Pebble Creek Parkway at the Virginia Avenue intersection. And just so you know where we are, this is, most of the pictures were taken at Harvard Street, which is about a hundred and fifty yards south of Virginia Avenue, and we'll be facing north. So, the next picture we're gonna see, there, there we go. Okay, this is the intersection, well, we got two of them. So, this is the intersection that is in question, and if you'll notice on the picture that you're gonna see, you'll see two trucks, a car and a vehicle, heading north. One car is in the left-hand lane, and the second car is in the middle lane of the three lanes coming up from McDowell to along Pebble Creek Parkway. We proceed, the next picture is, you'll see two cars, and you can see how the white car that's furthest to the north is making an angled movement north of Virginia in a one-lane area, basically driving on the shoulder to get back into the single lane that we have here. If we move along, you're gonna see, here you'll see the same situation, this was a picture that was taken later today. Basically, all these pictures were taken in a fifteen-minute timeframe during around one o'clock this afternoon. You'll see the black truck is making a right-hand turn. The right-hand turns have painted gores, have very good traffic signals, except the middle lane basically goes away at Virginia Boulevard. We don't have anything that, on the next slide, you'll see basically the same situation of cars working their way through it. This is what I'm asking the city council to ask our traffic engineers to go to the yard, go to our public safety maintenance yard. This sign is in Goodyear, and I know we have more of these. And in the comments at the July ninth meeting, I'll be done shortly, in the comments at the July meeting, the city chief engineer said the contract was gonna be let next month, and that this roadway that's narrow at the park would be finished sometime in 2008. However, at this point in time, we still have an area of infrastructure that is, and an accident is gonna happen. And just so you know that I do have some pull, that picture, I lost my picture, there it is. I can always bring the Mounties down from Canada to, you know, join you and try to enforce some of these rules. So, I thank you for your time. I want you to know that I do consider this a serious matter, because a friend of mine was almost run off the road again today. Councilwoman Lord has been run off the road, the mayor drives this daily, Councilwoman Holland drives this daily. I think we need to do something about it, and not doing anything for the next couple of months is not satisfactory. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Since we have reported, back to Mr. Gelzer, can you summarize that and give us an update on that, right, real quick for the audience?
Mayor, council, I can do that quickly, and welcome back. Gary, welcome back. I appreciate your comments and I appreciate your concerns. Last we spoke with council, we were gonna put some additional construction signs. We had anticipated our Phase Two contractor to be on board by this time. So, what we did, we just fixed whatever signage was out there, permanent signage, we added additional white signs out there. Unfortunately, that contract has been delayed a bit, it won't start till probably by the end of October. So, I spoke with Mr. Gelzer prior to the meeting, and what we'll do, we'll put a digital sign up Pebble Creek as soon as we can to address this issue.
Okay, thank you very much.
Mr. Mayor, we have a speaker card from Glow O'Donnell.
Okay.
Glow.
Glow?
Mayor Cavanaugh and the council, I'm Glow O'Donnell with the Southwest Lending Closet, and I'm excited. The Estrella Mountain College has decided to have the Southwest Lending Closet as their one to receive proceeds from various events that they do this year. And this year, on September eighth, they're going to do a golf tournament, it's their fifth annual golf tournament. So, I'm trying to urge you, and all of you, to come to that tournament, it's only seventy-five dollars, and if you are not a professional, you have a hole-in-one, you can get a Toyota Tundra. You know, that's pretty good. There are other things that you can get too, even if you don't get a hole-in-one. And I'm proud to say that Jim Cavanaugh is going to be there, and Brian Dawkey, and please help me with the other two that were going to come from the city of Goodyear. Anyway, two others.
Iwanski. And Sean, I think.
Thank you, thank you, thank you. And I wish that we could have about, maybe two-hundred-and-fifty people come, because that would be great. And Brenda Holland, our president, is just about as excited as I am.
I am.
But I've spent all day today trying to go to different golf clubs and saying, "Hey, talk about this one, somebody could win." And really, I do thank you all for everything you do for us, and we're mostly from Goodyear, and we do appreciate all of you. Any questions?
We appreciate you too, Flo.
Thank you, Dick.
I'd like to just add one little thing for people's benefit, and of course, we're very proud of all the work that's been done this year with the Southwest Lending Closet, but all the events that the school is having this year, the Southwest Lending Closet will benefit from. And that includes Oktoberfest and some of the other things that will be going on. So, make sure you get out and support it, because it means you're also supporting our community.
There'll be five of them, and so I hope we can get about ten dollars. Thank you very much, and if somebody hasn't gotten anything about the Oktoberfest, I mean, about the golf tournament, I'll be glad to give it to them. So, just stand up and yell. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thank you very much, Glow. Is the red light the only one that works? Is the red light the only one that works? It's sort of annoying to a person to get up there and get a red light before they start talking. Okay. Any other comments from the citizens on a non-agenda item? Okay. Saying non, we'll move to the consent agenda, and I'd like to announce that Agenda Item 7I, the map of dedication for right-of-way for La Sprices Phase 2 Citrus, is being postponed to a future date, I believe at the request of the applicant. Ask the city clerk to read the consent items A through Q, with the exception of I by title, please.
Council will consider approving the draft minutes of the special meeting held on July 2nd, 2007. Draft minutes of a work session held on July 2nd, 2007. Draft minutes of a work session held on July 9th, 2007. Draft minutes of a regular meeting held on July 9th, 2007. B, council will consider adopting ordinance 07-1081, providing for conditional rezoning of 1.1 acres of property from the planned area development zoning district to the public facilities district for Goodyear Fire Station Number 185, located southwest of the southwest corner of Clubhouse Drive and Pebble Creek Parkway. Amending supplementary zoning map number 07-013 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date. C, council will consider approving the condominium preliminary plat for the Palm Valley Condominiums, formerly known as Palm Valley Luxury Rentals Apartment Complex, subdividing approximately 16 acres into 18 residential condominium buildings with 260 dwelling units and five tracks located at 1751 and 1891 North Litchfield Road within Phase 1 of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, subject to stipulations. Item D, council will consider approving the condominium final plat for Palm Valley Condominiums, subdividing approximately 16 acres into 18 residential condominium buildings with 260 dwelling units and five tracks located at 1751 and 1891 North Litchfield Road within Phase 1 of the Palm Valley Planned Area Development District, subject to stipulations. Item E, council will consider approving a real estate purchase contract in the amount of $1,114,651 with Silva Farming Enterprises LLP to purchase a 10-acre site with a fire station and water facilities located at the northeast corner of Citrus Road in the Harrison Street alignment. Item G, item F, council will consider adopting ordinance 07-1079, amending provisions of the Goodyear City Code, Chapter 14, to include provisions to prohibit waste of water and to establish enforcement procedures and penalties. G, council will consider adopting Resolution 07-1174, authorizing the city manager to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the Arizona Department of Transportation to exchange right-of-way for the construction of underdeck lighting conduit and full boxes, providing for an effective date, full boxes. Item H, council will consider approving a request from Jason Morris, representing Goodyear CVS LLC, for Series 9 liquor license for CVS Pharmacy, 03749, located at 2840 North Dyser Road, Goodyear. Item J, council will consider adopting Resolution 07-1175, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute an agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Maricopa County Neighborhood Narcotics Enforcement Team. Item K, council will adopt Resolution 07-1176, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute an agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Maricopa County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Maricopa County Neighborhood Narcotics Enforcement Team overtime agreement. Item L, council will consider adopting ordinance 07-1080, amending the planned land uses for the 71.81-acre Cervel Crossing Planned Area Development, generally located at the southeast corner of Cervel Avenue and Elwood Street. Amending supplementary zoning map 06-028 to provide for the amendment of the planning area development, providing separability and providing for an effective date. Item M, council will consider approving the preliminary plat for Cervel Crossing, subdividing 71.81 acres into 18 commercial business park and industrial lots located at the southeast corner of Cervel Road and Elwood Street, subject to stipulations. Item N, council will consider approving a comprehensive sign package for Palm Valley Phase 9 of 209.3-acre mixed-use residential light, industrial, and open space development, generally located north of Camelback Road and east of Falcon Dunes Golf Course, subject to stipulations. Item O, council will consider Resolution 07-1177, authorizing the city manager and chief of police to execute an agreement between the City of Goodyear and the Arizona Department of Public Safety, State of Arizona, to participate in the Arizona Vehicle Theft Task Force. Item P, council will consider adopting ordinance 07-1083, providing for conditional rezoning of 8 acres of property from the general commercial zoning district to the final planned area development zoning district, and approving amendments to ordinance 06-1033 and zoning map 06-003 to amend 1.5 acres of the Estrella Commons Final Planned Area Development, generally located north of the northeast corner of Estrella Parkway and Van Vieren Street. Amending supplementary zoning map 07-007 to provide for the change in zoning and amendment to the Estrella Commons Final Plaid Area Development, providing separability and providing for an effective date. Item Q, council will consider approving a special use permit to allow an allied wireless communications facility on 0.23 acres in the Maricopa County Transfer Station, generally located along the east side of Rainbow Valley Road, and approximately 1 1/2 mile north of the Jermaine Road alignment, with a waiver from the height limitation to allow a height of 154 feet, subject to stipulations.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Would anyone on council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to have Item 7C pulled for information.
Can we discuss it before we vote?
Yeah, we can.
Okay. I'd also, I don't want to pull anything, but on 7F, if council doesn't agree, it's about the waste of water ordinance. I thought the public might want to hear something about that. So when Dave gets up to talk about Adamant, let him, two minutes about what that's all about, okay? All right. So Dave, I told you about that. Okay, Dick?
Yes, Brent, Rick, do you say anything, Bob?
Yeah, I'm thinking Brent's not here tonight.
Okay. My concern here, Bob, is about the people who are renting the apartments right now. How is this transition going to affect them? Are they going to be offered to purchase their existing apartments that are going to be converted to condominiums? And what is the cost going to be between what they're paying now for the rent and what they're going to be paying for the condominiums if you opt to pick up a mortgage?
Mayor, Councilman Souza, I'm going to let the owner of the property or the representative respond to that, but it's my understanding that the individual tenants today have been provided notice, at least that their leases are going to expire, I believe, on December. Let me ask the applicant to respond further in regards to the specific communications and the other question in regards to the cost.
Good evening. I'm Rick McCool. I represent the owner of Petcor out of Indianapolis. And just to kind of give you a background of how we'll be treating the residences, is that as of, you know, right now, we're waiting for your approval to make a decision whether we do want to take these as condominiums. So we are certainly treating all the residents today as apartment leasers, and their leases that are in place will stay in place. And we won't be asking anyone to be leaving at any time earlier in their lease term at all. And they will also be given a first right to either purchase their unit as-is, or if they get redone, or whatever needs to be done. And as far as to further answer your other question about what the mortgage payments would be against the rents, the pricing of these condominiums, when they're going to be done, will be in a range of an affordable situation. The one-bedrooms will be possibly in the 130 to 150 range, the two-bedrooms in the 160 to 180 range, and then the three-bedrooms will be below 200. So they'll be in the 199 range. So compared to what rent that they might be paying today to what the mortgage payments might be with our submarket, the way it is today, or whatever, but depending on what kind of a mortgage that they do get on that situation, it could be very comparable to what they're paying in rent today.
Because an article I read in the newspaper basically said that. I was concerned whether or not that was true or...
That is true. That is true. So they will be in an affordable situation.
When do you anticipate these conversions to begin?
Well, if we get approval, the owner's going to have to sit back to see if he will be. We've kind of got, we'll have to compile some numbers to see what's going on, and if we do want to carry forward with it, and if we get all the approval, probably start in the middle of the bell, probably the first quarter, second quarter of next year. So probably renovations and be starting to sell maybe next year, a little bit later after that.
But you're saying, if you want to continue with it, what do you mean by that?
Well, we haven't gotten approval yet.
Well, if you got approval...
If we got approval, then we would probably, we would start beginning of next year, and, you know...
And how would you, how would you take these conversions? Peace deal, or would you take...
No, we're not, we wouldn't even go to a situation of cleaning out each building or do anything like that. It would be a situation as their lease came due, you know, because we're, really, the owners in a good position that it's not a situation that they have to sell, you know, very quickly or anything like that. And as we all know, kind of with the condominium market, what's happening in Phoenix, it's having an up-and-air situation. We believe that as strong as Goodyear is and the affordability of what we can do here, that won't be a situation here, because it's a unique situation, so...
Yeah, I'm just concerned about people that are currently in the apartments, whether or not, you know, this is going to create a problem for them.
Well, we're certainly not going to try to create a problem for them at all. I mean, it's a situation that we're not going to be asking them to move out before any of their lease terms are over.
Technically, their leases will become certain time.
Exactly.
A percent can increase the price of that lease for the next year.
No, we're not going to...
No, and saying if you didn't convert them over.
Right.
I mean, it's business, so it could be that those people stayed and they didn't convert them, that they wouldn't be renting that for the same price they rented it last year. I don't know.
No, no, they would be.
The market is...
Well...
I'm just stating that.
Right.
And I think what is important about this is it brings a certain price level into Goodyear that we no longer have.
No, I appreciate that.
So that's my...
I just want to make sure that, you know, that people are there, are treated fairly.
Absolutely.
That, you know, that we don't get into an eviction situation where they're driven to where they can't afford anything.
That's, that's not our goal.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you.
Did you have something?
Well, I got a follow-up question for staff. Is there, when we convert, this is the, correct me if I'm wrong, this will be the first one of these we've gone through. When we convert from a part, and I'm not wondering right now if we shouldn't just pull this to discuss a little bit further, Mayor, but you're rocking a pair, I'll keep asking questions until you tell me not to. Do we, when we can, when we convert from an apartment to a condo, are there, I mean, I heard the gentleman say that there's, you know, they may, they may convert them, they may not. Aren't there, are there differences between rental and for-sale housing, and do we have, you know, do they need to be brought up to code that maybe wasn't code in the past? It's just, I mean, it came out of P&amp;Z 5-0 vote. I don't really see a whole lot of discussion at P&amp;Z, but Dick's raised some interesting questions.
Maybe we ought to pull this for further discussion.
Mayor?
Let me answer the question.
Mayor, Councilman Antoniak, no, there is not a difference in the development standards for condominium versus for rent. In fact, there's a section in the Arizona revised statutes that directs the city not to treat a condominium, a conversion from a rental to a condominium, any different relative to the development of the site in terms of its parking, architecture, things of that nature that we would review. So there is very limited in what the county, the city can do relative to conversions from rental to condominium. It is really a ministerial matter of having council's approval of the plat to record. It's, you know, it's an ownership thing, but in terms of the physical structures, really the city's hands are bound in terms of what it can and cannot do. Basically, we cannot require things of a condominium that we wouldn't require of a similar development of a multifamily rental. I have that statute...
No, I'm just, I'm just... Further comments?
Bob, are they going to form their own HOA then?
Mayor, Councilman Souza, yes, absolutely. There are CCNRs, condition covens, restrictions that'll be formed. There will be a homeless association. There'll be a condominium where there is, you know, as a condominium association that will represent, the owners will buy the airspace within the condominium in the undivided interest of all the condominium properties.
Has there been any outcry or opposition from the public?
No, there has not.
That brings up another item on how their utilities are set up. Do they have individual meters for electric? Do they have individual meters for water? What's, what's their setup? Is it, if it is individual, no problem, but how is that being converted?
Let me ask Dennis Keough, the project engineer, to answer that utility question.
For the record, my name is Dennis Keough. My address is 14150 West McDowell, Goodyear, Arizona. Right now, there are master meters for all the units. There's a domestic water system, there's a fire line system, and then there's a private sewer system. The water company is Lipsco. The master water system will be metered and billed by Lipsco, and the bills will be divided into the units. So they will get a water bill and a sewer bill that is mastered and divided by the number of users that create the amount of the bill.
So a one-bedroom apartment might get something for two people, and a three-bedroom might get something for four?
That's correct.
But they're not on separate meters?
No.
That's pretty common.
Further questions or comments?
I can actually go a little further if you'd like me to.
Yeah, go into...
The units aren't individually electrically metered, and what's going on with the water and sewers, there's actually a metering device that actually goes in between their unit and between the water heaters, so they actually will get charged for their actual usage for water and sewer, and get billed back.
Okay. I didn't know that.
Okay, just so you know. So they won't be just charged, this one bedroom gets this, or this two-bedroom gets this. They'll actually be charged their own usage, okay?
Thank you.
Do we ask an APS services the same way?
Right.
Are those meters right now?
Yeah, those meters are in now.
Okay, good. Okay, further?
Yeah, pull it. I'm sorry, pull it. I got another question.
Can you, okay?
Can we take care of that for consent?
Did you say pull it?
Yeah, just pull it. I just got, I got another question for my staff.
All right. C. It's going to be C and D.
It's going to be C and D?
Yeah. So D applies, D, is it all tipped?
Yeah, okay. So C and, 7C and D are being pulled. 7I was postponed. So, I have a motion then to approve Items 7A through 7Q, with the exception of 7I, which has been postponed, and at this time, 7D and 7E, 7C and 7D, which are being pulled for further discussion.
So moved.
Second. I have a motion from Councilmember Cavalier and a second from Vice Mayor. Antoniak, roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay. Vice Mayor, your honor?
Yeah, just, I mean, just this being the first of one or two that we may deal with in the future. Did we vet this with PD and talk about code enforcement issues and other issues that we may face with single ownership, I mean, individual ownership, absentee owners, maybe? Sorry. Because our code enforcement staff, sorry, well, I don't have to answer that, Mr. Geltzer, but, I mean, was any of that vetted at P&amp;Z? Was that...
Mayor, Councilman Antoniak, as part of our standard review process for each one of these applications, a copy is, is routed to Fire Department, PD, code compliance, and other departments in the city as part of our development review. I do not recall that they have made any, raised any issues relative to the conversion.
Police and fire didn't?
Okay.
Well, code is code.
Well, code is code, but, you know, I can't, we can't enforce the code requests we're getting today, and obviously, we're going to have a, assume a robust HOA in this conversion.
Well, code is code.
Well, code is code, but, you know, I can't, we can't enforce the code requests we're getting today, and obviously, we're gonna have a, assume a robust HOA in this conversion, but.
That should prevent us from increasing our affordable housing.
I don't disagree with you. I don't disagree with you at all. I just, I just create some questions.
No, go ahead. Bob, if conversions are being made, okay, and changes are being made between the apartments and they were not being formed into condominiums, shouldn't the city be involved in that, the building inspectors and what have you?
Mayor.
Five units?
Mayor, Councilman Sousa.
As I understand it, the remodeling that's being, will be done in the interior of each
of the units, it would not necessarily necessitate a building permit, but if a building permit will be required for plumbing, electrical, or, or structural, then they would follow the standard process that we do as, as for a rent apartment. Last year, I think they went through an extensive exterior remodeling program on the exterior, which had been completed, and they're gonna do the interior remodeling. But again, we process the plat for a condominium to ensure that it adequately defines the limits of what will be defined as that condominium unit, which is the airspace within the floor, the ceiling, and the walls. And the statutes basically say to the city, you don't treat condominiums any different in terms of building code, or other real estate law ordinance, or otherwise between a condominium and a core rent development.
They're gonna be the same kind of firewall, because they have, I mean, everything is just the same.
Yes, they are. The building code requirements are the same.
I mean, they want to refurbish the interior, but this, it really doesn't change anything. It just changed the ownership. You know, I understand your concern about not wanting to put people out on the street, but it's not seem like they, they've, that it will be within a price range. In a price range, we need in Goodyear, it's getting to be people can't come and work. It's not affordable. We need, we need this.
Yeah, I agree. I just want to make sure that not only the, the current occupants, okay, of the property are taken care of, but we're doing things right as far as the city's concerned.
The owner of the property, we've required to obtain all permits for any work within each building unit that are required for a rental apartment or a condominium. They're the same. As well as if they were to make exterior changes, significant exterior changes, or change parking, or provide additional buildings on site, they'd be required to get the building permits and development review for each one of those.
You are, you are providing them pride of ownership. You're, you're providing those people that rent those homes, that great feeling it is when you put that dollar bill down and you sign on the dotted line and you own that airspace then. So I'm just assuming is a great number of them are in the apartments that can't afford to buy another house in Goodyear, and this gives them that ability to have their own home. May not be the kind of home you and I are used to, but it's, it's their confined space, which is, they can put home sweet home on their wall.
And they might get security deposits back that can help put them down.
That's right.
Would you like to make a motion?
Is it seven?
Seven C and D?
Our agenda changed between, so, yeah, I move that we approve seven C and D.
Second.
Motion from Vice Mayor Antoniak, second from Councilmember Holland. It isn't the resolution or ordinance, so all those in favor signify, signify by saying aye, please.
Aye.
opposed, aye, seven zero. Move now to the business part of our agenda. We'll start with Mario on the, got the IG to accelerate, IGA to accelerate.
Mr. Mayor, if I can interject, I'm gonna recuse myself for this, or affirm my workforce doing workout on the Interstate 10, and this does a change to the work that we're doing. So I'm gonna recuse myself from the discussion.
Please, thank you.
Excuse me.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, and welcome back. Before the council this evening is the five-party agreement between Goodyear, Avondale, Litchfield Park, ADOT.
You have the mic on?
Yeah. Can you hear me?
Yeah, no.
Okay, closer.
We gotta remember we're age challenged.
Yeah, okay.
I'm not.
The agreement, the agreement would accelerate the I-10 widening project from the Loop 101 to Cervel Lane, and it would also reimburse the local share of the community's obligation by $6 million. So I have a brief presentation, background, costs, and next steps. Are there any questions before I begin?
Thank you.
This is a map of the I-10 widening project. The project would add one general purpose lane and one HOV lane in both directions from the 101 to Dyzer, and it would add two general purpose lanes and one HOV lane from Dyzer to Cervel. ADOT has completed the design for this project and is ready to advertise and bid the project based on a signed agreement. By way of background, in 2006, the Southwest Valley worked to accelerate the I-10 widening project from a construction start date of 2011 through 2007. On April 4th, a special joint city council meeting was conducted by Goodyear, Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Buckeye. That meeting, there was a resolution that was unanimously approved. It declared the policies for accelerating the project, and it also authorized staff to develop an intergovernmental agreement to commit the local funds that would be necessary for accelerating that So once again, that night marked the commitment from the cities to support the project with local funds, with the local funds that are needed. On April 26th, recognizing that commitment, the MAG Regional Council approved the I-10 widening project from the Loop 101 to Cervel in the 2007-2011 Transportation Improvement Program. So at this point, it was Litchfield Park, Avondale, and Goodyear that were working together to develop an agreement that would pay for the design and the interest, the design and the construction that was necessary. In July 2006, the four parties, three cities and ADOT, signed the agreement for design. ADOT basically administered a help loan that, to cover the principal, and the interest would be covered by the three communities. About $757,000 are associated with that agreement. The local share of the interest is basically 60-40. It's based on the number of improved lane miles within the project. 60% Goodyear, for the most part, meaning that Goodyear would be responsible for 60% of that to cover the interest cost. The numbers are there. 58.5% for Goodyear, Avondale's at 38.5%, and Litchfield Park's at 3%. So those, those are the shares for design. They're also, it's the same cost allocation for the construction IGA, which is attached in your packet. On July of 2006, the, sorry, it was May 2007, where the communities reviewed and accepted the construction agreement, but action was tabled to wait and see what would happen at the legislature. And if you go back to that April 20, April 6th meeting at the Community College, state representatives were there, and they acknowledged the importance of the I-10 project. They recognized the, the cities stepping up to cover the local costs associated with the project, and they pledged to pursue funds to help offset that local impact. In fact, it was John Nelson who was successful in getting $10 million approved in the fiscal year 2008 state budget, and that was a result of House Bill 2793 that not only created this, the account to reimburse communities who accelerate transportation projects, but also the bill establishes a process for the Regional Planning Agency, in this case it's MAG, to establish a process and basically authorize that money for a project. The agreement also requires that at least one city has to partner with another city or county, ADOT, and the MAG Regional, or the Regional Planning Agency. So the project has gone through the MAG Regional Funding Process, and it was last week at the MAG Regional Council that it was recommended that the project received $6 million to offset the local share of the interest cost. So here's a look at the numbers. The total project is estimated to cost $135 million. The total interest associated with the project, $24.1 million. The regional freeway program covers 60% or 14.5 million. Basically takes the interest down to a balance of $9.6 million as a result of last week's Regional Council decision. $6 million has been authorized to offset the local share, bringing it down to $3.6 million. This is basically an idea of where we were in May, when the communities had reviewed and accepted the agreement. The local share at that time, it is, was 9.6. Goodyear was basically responsible for covering 5.6 million, Avondale 3.7, and Litchfield Park almost 300,000. As a result of last week's Regional Council decision, that local share's dropped to $3.6 million. So you can see that Goodyear's at 2.1, Avondale's at 1.4 million, and Litchfield Park's at $110,000. So the next step is, the agreement is back to each council to review and take action. And as I said, ADOT is ready to advertise and bid the project. They're waiting for an agreement. Last week, MAG stated accident data. They have 2005 numbers, basically for that year. There were 30 crashes on I-10 just within the city of Goodyear, half of those resulting in injury. So this is why that the, that this agreement is kind of making its way through the process with the hopes of getting it on the State Transportation Board for the September 21st Agenda. The Bill 2793 does require that a city do have another partner. So basically, the understanding last week was that the communities would go back, review, and take action on the, on the item. If three cities sign the agreement, then it can move forward to the State Transportation Board on the 21st. If two cities don't sign the agreement, then it, it will go back to MAG Regional Council to revisit the appropriation, or the city that signed would have to find another partner in order to qualify for this money. Just the last point, it is a draft before you. Four parties have reviewed, have reviewed the agreement. ADOT is currently reviewing the agreement, so your action tonight would authorize the mayor to authorize an agreement that's in substantial compliance with the attached document in your packet. That concludes my presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, let me, well, for public opportunity, do we have any comments from the public? Okay, seeing none, I'll ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only, please.
Resolution on the Mayor and Council, the City of Goodyear, Maricopa County, Arizona, authorizing the Mayor of Goodyear to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Avondale, the City of Litchfield Park, the Arizona Department of Transportation, and the Maricopa Association of Governments for the acceleration of improvements to Interstate 10 from the Loop 101 to Cervel Avenue.
Okay, I'd ask Councilmember Sousa if he would make the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we adopt Resolution Number 07-1179, authorizing the mayor to execute an intergovernmental agreement with the City of Avondale, the City of Litchfield Park, the Arizona Department of Transportation, and the Maricopa, Maricopa Association of Governments for the acceleration of improvements to I-10 with such IGA to include reimbursement to the cities of interest cost of at least $6 million. I so move.
I have a motion, I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Sousa and a second from Councilmember Holland. Before I open this, could I summarize where we are on this? And I've been intimately involved, actually, in the program since it started a couple of years ago. But I'm also for public, I'm the Chair of MAG, so I had the position of listening to all the arguments and participating in them as a mayor of Goodyear. So it's, first, I'd like to say that it's absolutely essential that we, we not do anything that we might later regret. The agreement 60-40 is, is under reconsideration, and it's, it's possible that the city may receive more reimbursement than 60%. And we should know within a couple of days, if not sooner. But as, as the press has relayed, there are very many hard, strong feelings and hurt feelings in this whole process. And I think what we want to do in Goodyear is not to exacerbate any of those. So I, I'm gonna stay away from any negative comment. I've been doing that, by the way, anyway. But just, just briefly, this isn't a simple thing of one city implementing a weighted vote. The question is, why did they do that? And I'm not gonna defend that, but I just want to hear the arguments. The, the arguments from, I think, the two cities is that Avondale and Litchfield Park is that we never should have had to do this in the first place, that this is a federal highway. And I think everybody feels that way. But Prop 400 actually includes construction of I-10 in 2011, of which the feds were paying half. So to move that ahead, and we found out after Prop 400 passed, that simply waiting to 2011 to 2013 to start building that was totally unacceptable. So there is an option that communities can do, and that is called implement the acceleration policy. In that policy, cities commit that they'll pay a portion of the carrying costs. And if they don't commit to that, then the road is not accelerated. So, so should we have had to pay, it'd been nice if we, it's not our highway, but somebody had to step up to the plate. And then the new, never legally committed to pay, and that's, that's the position of the two cities, and I'm not gonna question that position, but that's not our position. We, we, we feel morally committed to pay because we said we'd pay. So that's, that's our position. From the opposite side, the Mason, Phoenix, and most East Valley, they figure this is an earmark, and they think earmarks harm MAG, because MAG is a process in which everybody comes together, just nearly as regional, one might like necessarily, but it is a process, and everybody gets a shot at it. With an earmark, it's sort of jammed into the system, and you comply with the headquarters' direction. Some would consider an earmark. Some people argue that. This would not have been, this acceleration would not have been approved had the three cities not committed to paying the carrying costs. That's a, that is a fact. Whether the two cities did or not, the fact is, people presumed that they did, and certainly I, I did. And if we hadn't made that clear, this would not even be an issue today. We would be planning to suffer for four more years. So. Earlier accelerations were not reimbursed. I'm not sure that's a great argument, but that is an argument that's out there by a couple of the cities. And, you know, one of the reasons it wasn't reimbursed was they probably didn't ask. So it's, that's a fact of life. But they may ask now. And then another thing is the acceleration policy. If in fact, you, cities are to be reimbursed, then there's no belief that there's any sacrifice, and therefore, you'll never have acceleration approved, because the whole foundation of acceleration is, a community has to demonstrate a sacrifice, has to demonstrate that they're willing to pay part of the carrying cost. If there is an expectation they'll be reimbursed, then the cities aren't paying anything. So that's, that's an argument that I think's worthwhile. And then yours truly was accused by a few of the cities that I didn't follow process, I was going too fast. We did follow process, but it did go fast. And the reason for that is, there's people who are dying on I-10, and any delay is just totally unacceptable. So the sooner we can do it, the sooner we can process this, the better off we are. And I think people came to the conclusion that that was the right thing to do. Simply, the lives on I-10 are too important for government to delay. I want you to know the right step, and it was clear, by the way, who would, who, if anybody would get the money, who would get it. We needed to move quickly, just for the sake of our responsibility to our people. Now, the, the vote at the MAG, which is getting a lot of attention, should be just briefly summarized. It started out that I, as, I insisted that, I didn't insist, I asked, if everybody agreed, that the first vote would be 100%, because that shows deference to our state legislatures who asked, who provided the 10 million. They wanted it to be given to the three cities. The three cities should have that opportunity. And then also, I, a couple of other reasons, but that, that was the main reason, that that should be the first vote. That vote passed in a straight numerical vote, I think it was 14 to 10.
That was.
Then Phoenix implemented something it has a legal right to do, and that's called a weighted vote. And then your, the vote becomes a function of how many people you have. For example, Goodyear gets two points, and I think Phoenix already got 41 or something like that. So there's a big difference. And if I were in Phoenix, I'd certainly probably want that capability, if 30 times more people than we do or so, something like that. Anyway, that overthrew the, the yes vote, and it became, I think, 70 to 30 against. So it was East Valley, Phoenix, and Mesa that carried that, and whether you like it or not, they had a right to do it. Then, and you can argue that, or you want to guess. Then, and you can argue that, or you want to guess. And then, and then, when that failed, one of the people in the East Valley said, "Well, let's go 40-60, 40 to us and 60 to the program." Well, that is what I understood we were moving towards, so I argued against that, and I thought that was totally unfair. And, also, it was a slap in the face of the state. So, they changed it to 60-40, and then we took a break. Did we ever need it by then, let me tell you. So, the 60-40 then was voted, and it came out a tie. So, the 60-40 lost, because it was a tie. Then, we went to 80-20, and 80-20 lost. But, the West Valley cities, except for, Goodyear voted for 80-20, but the other cities largely voted against it. So, 80-20 lost. So, now, we're struggling in a quandary. What do we do? Do we leave here getting nothing done? And, that was wrong. So, we took another break, and we, without going through it, we fought our way through it again, and we got another 60-40 vote, and it passed by 2. So, we got 60-40. That's really what happened. You've heard some of the arguments, other people can say them more eloquently, but there's good arguments on both sides in this thing. This isn't just the big guy beating up the small guy. This isn't just east versus west. There's actual arguments that make a difference to people. And, so, they exercise their rights associated with that argument. Okay, then, our position throughout has, okay, so now, there's a possibility of going higher than 60. And, Avondale's going to be looking at that, I think, in the next few hours, and then, hopefully, we'll get the three cities to come together. The problem here is that the $10 million mandates that you've got to have two or more cities. So, if Avondale and Litchfield Park, and they've been threatening it, decide not to participate, you're down to one city. The 10 million bucks goes away unless one of us can convince another city, like a Phoenix or Scottsdale or Tempe or some, "Join us, please, and we can get I-10 widened." But, I'm not sure they're going to raise their hand and ask for that opportunity, so it's, it might be difficult, if not impossible, to do that. Then, you can't ask the citizens of Goodyear, when they were offered to have this paid for in full, then go back and pay for the whole thing themselves. That's almost unethical, frankly. So, you know, it is not road. It's just a road that we stepped up to the plate to fix. And, now, we're down to 2.1 million or something like that, we work 5.7, we're at 2.1. I'm ecstatic, I think that's moving in the right direction. And, there's a possibility, if a couple cities agree, it's going down further. So, the consequences if we do not do this are significant and almost horrendous. Think of that road with those 18-wheelers coming out of Long Beach, plowing into this two-lane up here, as it backs up day in and day out, all hours of the day. And, so, I just can't fathom some young family in a van with an 18-wheeler coming at them. It's just horrible. So, we've got, we've got to widen that road, and the sooner the better. So, we're hanging in there, and I hope we do. Obviously, I'm pretty strong on this subject for going for it. And, I've been telling people that Goodyear is going to stand up to their commitment. And, I've been saying that without exception, frankly, because that's the way we are, I think. So, whether you agree with the commitment or not, we do, I think, and I hope, and we all are for our own opinions, but we're going to be saying a lot about ourselves in this vote. And, so, anyway, yes, ma'am?
I respect your statements you made, Mayor, and I thank you and the staff for everything you've done. And, if my comments affect the process of this, then shame on the other cities that it does, because this is the democratic way, we all have our rights to say how we feel. And, so, I had written up a couple of comments, I'm going to temper them somewhat, but I just want to review that MAGA this week, the Regional Council invoked an obscure weighted voting rule that decreased the reimbursements of the interest fund. If the papers are correct, or if I heard, somebody can remember one other time they used it.
I've heard one or two, and I'm aware.
So, you know, it's kind of.
14 years ago.
Yeah. And it was well-known that if the popular vote had counted, then Goodyear, Litchfield Park, and Goodyear would have received the full 10 million to offset the interest rates. This action clearly implies the city that carries the biggest stick, or shall we say, the biggest population wins. My concern is, MAGA has jeopardized the adoption of the IGA between Avondale, Litchfield Park, and Goodyear. And, this is my biggest one. I fear that this sets an example that will overshadow future decisions concerning the needs of smaller cities due to the population. What's to say, just can't read BBT to down, so there needs to be something within MAGA's rules, or whatever you, how are you incorporated, to help offset this? The fact that a remark was made that this was similar to Congress earmarking their pet projects, you know what? I can only respond by saying this to you, is saving lives a pet project? I was astounded. The other comment that if you had frontage on I-10, then you were responsible. Well, let me tell you, everybody's responsible, because everybody travels that road. I ask you to rethink those statements those people were making, that this problem involves the entire state, not just the community with exit ramps, due to the economical importance of this coast-to-coast interstate. Avondale, Litchfield Park, I too was disappointed, very disappointed, that the entire million was not approved. And, I can only imagine how disappointed you were, the decision-makers of the cities, knowing that the state legislature's intent of the 10 million was to be spent on the I-10 widening. I feel it would be irresponsible for me not to support this IGA. I'm right behind the mayor. I liked what he said, I'm with him. And, I beseech Avondale and Litchfield Park to support the reimbursement. But, in my view, it is our duty to do all we can to reduce the number of times a Maricopa County Highway Patrol knocks on someone's door to tell a family member that a loved one has died on this treacherous path of highway. And, remember, there is a chance that it could be your door or my door. So, I'm supporting it.
Thank you. Councilmember Souza?
Mr. Mayor, I was going to read a statement that I wrote over the weekend, and poured over it time and time again, but in deference to what you said and what has just been said by my learned councilwoman. I'll tear this up, but I'm going to say something verbally. I appreciate everything that you did during the four-hour session that you had at MAGA involving the cities that concerned themselves with this issue, and it is a serious issue. I am disappointed that other cities would take the position to go against what we three cities saw that was important to humanity, not only for our citizens here in the city of Goodyear, Avondale, and Litchfield Park, but to those cities further east, because this traffic that we're talking about at this particular time moves into the city of Phoenix and causes them tremendous problems, causes them economic problems, because it affects transportation that is going into their community. And, white people that represent those cities can't see that, is something beyond me, something Like my councilwoman to my left, I'm going to vote for this, and I reluctantly do this. But, I've got to realize this, that we went into this thing originally where we had commitments from the three communities to assume the $10 million that was required to move this issue for widening through. We're coming out of this with what I think is a nominal figure, $6 million to me from 10 million that was promised to us by the legislature, is to eat $3.6 million, is it hard for me to swallow. And, I just want people to know that have voted against these three cities and what they attempted to do, that you have established a no-man's land between east and west. And, I hope it doesn't go any further than this, I mean, but this is a serious issue. I thought we came over this hurdle years ago, but I see that we haven't done that yet. And, it's just, not to move along with this, is a compliment to society in general. And, I'm sorry to see that the positions that were taken by members of the MAGA committee that saw this thing and voted on it didn't see what we saw the need for months ago. But, if we don't go through with it, and I agree with you, Mr. Mayor, I agree with you wholeheartedly, we are going to be endangering a lot of lives. And, we're going to put this project off for many, many months, perhaps years, and that's not right, not right. I thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Well, I think that was all stated very well, and I commend, commend, I applaud this council and our city a year ago for stepping up to the plate with the other cities to start something that was a positive awareness, and it needs to continue to go, and I don't think that we should backtrack, because that's what will happen if we don't continue to go with this as it's put with this six million.
Thank you. Councilmember Holland?
I'll be brief, because I think almost everything is said about the safety and the importance of this project. My concern and thoughts have kind of followed along with, it's almost like the MAGA being a large organization, and the big cities have this way. We hear about it all the time, and we'd like to believe that it's not true, but it is true. And, so, looking at this 6 million, we can keep trying to squeeze more, we can go back and we can argue about it, but, my gosh, I think it's like a bird in the hand. We should just take this, we should say, "Hey, thanks," and we'll work the best way we can, and we stick to our original promises, so I will support it.
Thank you. Councilmember Cavalier?
Well, I agree with everything that's been said, and I think that probably the answer to this, if we really want to do this right, is Avondale and Litchfield Park and Goodyear set up a toll booth, so that any car coming from Phoenix be charged to drive through.
I love it!
And that would be. You've got a good idea there.
That would take care of everything, we'd get our money back.
You know what, that's a great idea. Thank you so much for bringing that up.
But, I'll be voting for it. Had to do with back up in the toll booth, so it's.
There you go. Can I work in it?
Yes. Okay, I think, you know, we're sending a strong message, and it is a message of integrity, so compliments to everybody here. And, I know everybody's emotionally attached to this. Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Councilmember Souza?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 6-0.
Okay, thank you. Dave and I want to get on Adam and Water.
Mayor and Council, good evening. Mayor Kavanaugh asked earlier for a brief explanation with regard to the water-wasting ordinance that you adopted and passed earlier as part of Consent Agenda Item F. In essence, what the ordinance does is authorize the city manager and/or his or her designee to work with our citizens and work with our customers in addressing what are obviously water-wasting circumstances. For example, if we see that an irrigation system is delivering more water to the sidewalk and into the street than it is to the turf and the landscaping, that's obviously a waste of water. If we notice in a restaurant that a sink faucet is running, or a toilet tank is running continuously, that obviously is a situation where water is being wasted. We're all familiar with the adage carrot and stick. I would characterize the ordinance as being heavy on the carrot, light on the stick. We want to make this user-friendly. Customers are receptive, citizens are receptive, but the bottom line is, this ordinance reflects the importance, as a matter of public policy, that this mayor and council places on water conservation. Most, if not all, of the other cities have very similar ordinances. The most recently adopted, back in May, was our sister city Avondale, and it's our turn pursuant to all the activities related to the Water Conservation and Curtailment Plan. We got specific direction from this mayor and council to move forward, and the Water Resources Department thanks you for your support.
Any comments or questions on that?
I'm just excited to see it.
Me too.
It's like the first step, because we still have some other issues we know we have to take care of, including encouraging our folks not to plant more grass and all those kinds of things. So, I consider this kind of a first step.
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, I appreciate that. It is one of several initial steps, and as we get more sophisticated and further into the finalization of the Conservation and Curtailment Plan, there will be a number of steps to follow, believe me. That's the commitment that we made to you.
Okay, Dave, before you start, could we, anybody wants to take off their coat? Certainly welcome to do that. It's hot back here. Dave, you too?
Mr. Cruz, we have the Adam and presentation. Mayor and Council, the Water Resources Department is bringing forward the Adam and Bulk Water Delivery Agreement before you for approval tonight. What this Bulk Water Delivery Agreement does, and we've got what we consider to be the really key select deal points for this agreement, that Adam and agrees to provide the city up to 10 million gallons of water per day for a period of 80 years with three additional 10-year extensions beyond that. Essentially, this contract can run for 110 years, which makes this water supply part of our bucket when we work with the Department of Water Resources on getting our redesignation of 100-year-assured water supply. This represents approximately 16% of the total build-out water demand that we'll have in the city of Goodyear. Comprehensive groundwater modeling was conducted to confirm the physical availability of this water. It is in a confined sub-basin. State law allows us to develop supplies, groundwater supplies down to 1,000 feet. In order to focus on sustainability, which generates a lot of comfort level for both Adam and as well as the city, we don't want to pump it till you drop. We are not going down to 1,000 feet. Our hydrology shows that all of this water is available at depths that would not exceed 700, 750 feet. So, there is what is really considered a lot of freeboard in terms of water availability. But, the key is, before we enter into this, we need it to ensure with as much certainty as possible that the water is physically available. This closed basin also protects that water from contamination for any superfund or related contamination generated from Luke Air Force Base. The per-acre foot cost is $67, plus $43 for the cost of energy, and a 12% administration fee, which covers all of the delivery-related expenses, legal, engineering, professional services, et cetera. So, the all-in cost, as Mr. Bradford likes to phrase it, is $112.12 per acre foot. Cost will be adjusted in the future according to the Consumer Price Index. The city will pay capital costs, then, for a 600,000 gallon-per-day arsenic removal system for Adam and. The city will be reimbursed for all of these costs. These invested capital costs are returned to the city in the discount to the per-acre foot water pricing. So, that's how we cost-recover on the capital. And, by the way, to put things into perspective, this water supply, the cost per acre foot will probably end up being one of the most inexpensive, i.e., lowest-cost parts of our water portfolio. Water will be delivered to the city via transmission line with a proposed alignment down Servo Road. This is a proposed alignment, proposed being the operative word. There may be other alignments, but this seems to provide the most cost-effective direct route for transmission. The estimated capital cost, $40 million. This is not cheap, as you well know, to develop water supplies. That works out to $35.71. That works out to $35.71 an acre foot for the capital component. It's very good water. Yes, there is treatment needed for nitrates. Yes, there is treatment needed for arsenic, but it is very low in TDS. So no brine flow, no necessary, nothing's, no reverse osmosis is necessary, which is, which is, again, cost savings to the city. You will notice in the purple is the actual service area, the exterior boundaries of the Adamant Mutual Water Company. So you get a flavor, it's bordered on the north by Northern Avenue. All that in purple immediately west of Luke Air Force Base. That blue square essentially represents the center of Adamant, where the deepest pocket of water resides. And as I mentioned earlier, the proposed transmission line along Saraville Road, north to south to Canyon Trails.
David, did you want us to ask questions? Could I go ahead and ask you something since you have this up?
Go ahead.
Goodbye.
Ask and you shall receive. Be happy to answer any questions.
You had that map up, so I was going to ask something about that map, but it's not important. What is the latest word on that proposed alignment coming through the Pebble Creek area?
When you say the latest word?
Right, because you were going to try to work with Lipsco, who's also going to have to go in and put some pipes in. I just wonder what was the latest. Has anything happened this summer?
What we'll be bringing back to the mayor and council in October is the Seam at Risk Engineering Contract for the water development and transmission work. In other words, the infrastructure-related work. At that time, we'll have a specific blueprint of how big, what the alignment's going to be, number of wells to bring online, all the treatment facilities, et cetera. In terms of that particular alignment, that appears to be the most cost-effective alignment in terms of expenditures. We have to coordinate with not only Adamant, but going through the service areas of Arizona American Water Company, Litchfield Park Service Company, and obviously the city of Goodyear. So there are a lot of rights of way, there are a lot of agreements that need to be reached to facilitate construction of that transmission line. There may be some opportunities, and we have been exploring this almost on a weekly basis, to partner for either other alignments or as part of this alignment. It's a work in progress. This is just proposed, and there's a lot more work left to be done. What we're bringing to you here tonight is simply the Bulk Water Delivery Agreement to set the stage of bringing that physically available water to the city.
Is it important for us to consider extensions at this particular time that may come through Pebble Creek property to do it now while there's, because there isn't home building going on in that particular area?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, it's always good planning if you can put your infrastructure in the ground at times where it is least disruptive for traffic, for residents, for businesses. Those particular areas of the city are in the developing stages, but not yet fully developed. So the sooner we can put this infrastructure in the ground, the less disruptive it'll be. There will be some disruption, however. Anytime you have a large construction project, those things are inevitable.
David, I just want to go back to my question. So if we end up not partnering with Lipsco when they put their pipes in the ground, then you'll come back to us with a different option than rather than running down Saraville?
Mayor, Councilmember Holland, that would probably be Mr. Bradford's call. Certainly, we only want, if we have to dig a trench, a hole, or open a street, we'd certainly want to coordinate so we only had to do it once. And that's the goal and objective. If for whatever reason, though, our timing differs from other partners, we'll do what's in the best interest of Goodyear.
Okay, I'm going to open up the public and come back to council. Comments from the public? Mr. Gelsner?
This is a question for Mr. Iwansky. Do we not have a wheeling agreement with Central Arizona Project and to bring down 10 million acre-feet per year in the future? And how would the Adamant alignment and the infrastructure be hooked up in the future to that wheeling agreement? Thank you.
Mayor, council, Mr. Gelsner, excellent question. Our Central Arizona Project water, the MNI Municipal and Industrial Subcontract Water, the 100-year lease water that we received from the Gila River Indian Water Rights Settlement, and the new MNI reallocated water, all of that will be delivered, the general agreement is that all of that water would be delivered through the Beardsley Canal pursuant to a wheeling agreement with the Maricopa Water District. Maricopa Water District is in negotiation with Arizona American to site and construct a surface water treatment plant on the Beardsley Canal. So we'd wheel our CAP and Indian lease water through the Beardsley, have it treated at that site, wherever it ultimately gets sited and constructed, and then deliver finished water, in other words, potable water, down a second alignment, most likely Citrus. Once again, that's a work in progress. We haven't decided on an exact alignment yet, need to look at varying costs. But this is, this alignment here, Adamant, is simply a raw water, not a finished water supply. That water still needs to be treated for distribution into the city. What we received after treatment from the CAP plant will be finished potable water that we can put directly into the system.
By taking, taking the two proposals, okay, the Adamant proposal and CAP water, what is the least costly for the city of Goodyear?
Long-term, Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, surface water supplies or high-quality groundwater supplies, both of which are reflected in those two projects, are going to be the least costly because you don't have to treat for high TDS. So you don't have any RO costs, you don't have any brine management or brine disposal-related costs. So longer-term, those will be the lowest-cost water. Shorter-term, we'll rely on high-quality groundwater from Adamant.
You were telling me that in our meeting last week, that Adamant is an excellent water source, that it has the least amount of treatment. Is that correct?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, we will have to treat for most probable arsenic and nitrate. But that treatment does not generate a brine stream, and it's a lot lower cost using existing, readily-available science and technology to treat for those two as opposed to TDS because you then have that brine, brine stream to deal with.
Which is an expensive operation.
Yes, sir, it is.
Okay. Further comments or questions from the public? Okay, could I have a motion, please? No, yeah, call for motion, please, on the Adamant Water Development Agreement.
Mayor, I move the council approve a Bulk Water Delivery Agreement between the city of Goodyear and Adamant Mutual Water Company. authorize the city manager to execute all necessary documents.
Second.
Motion of Vice Mayor Antoniak, second from Councilmember Holland, hoping for continued discussion. Vice Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier?
Yeah, on the, the area where the Adamant Water Company is, isn't that now the city of Glendale? That property, isn't that north of Camelback? That is a county, is it?
Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier, I'm not, I'm not sure.
It's stripped by Glendale, but Glendale only annexed the base. So they may eventually annex that, but it's not yet, it's still county.
There was a battle between El Mirage, a court battle between El Mirage and Glendale over that area west of Luke Air Force Base because they wanted that de-annexed from Glendale.
They wanted out of the strip annex.
Okay. So that is county, as far as you know.
But it eventually will become Glendale, probably. Glendale wants the 303.
I just wondered how that would affect the, our water. Would that make any change in our ability to, to get water from Adamant?
Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier, the Adamant Mutual Water Company has the certificate of convenience and necessity to serve all of that area within what you see as purple up there on the map. They also have the ability, since they have the legal right and the water is physically available, to deliver that water to other customers. Goodyear, in this case, would be a bulk water delivery customer. So we do have legal rights and would continue to have legal rights to the water pursuant to our contract.
Frank makes a very good point. If this does become Glendale, are we going to have to negotiate with Glendale to cut that water line through their, through their, their city limits?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, the agreement would be legally binding. Glendale is the latecomer to the party. If they tried to do something like that, and I'd probably defer to Mr. Massey. But I don't think legally there's, that we are at risk if that happened. And if Glendale did try, in fact, to impose something like that, it would be of significant, they'd have to pay a lot of money.
Okay. What if, if we cut this deal tonight, how soon would you, would you contemplate that we would get into this operation?
It's contemplated, as I referenced earlier, Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, that the Seam at Risk contract for engineering services and then subsequently the construction-related services will be coming back before you in October. It would be our goal and objective that Adamant Water would be available to the customers in Goodyear by the summer of 2009. That's a very aggressive schedule. That's why we're here tonight, and that's why we'll be back in October for the, for the other contracts.
I want to add one more. I'm sorry. Go ahead. I still have one more comment, one more question.
Okay.
If I may, Mayor.
Go ahead.
In the state of Arizona, is it not true or is, that the law states that the water goes with the property? In other words, that area where the Adamant Water exists or where that originates, if that property in that area needs that water, that that has, that area has first claim to it, even though there are other agreements?
Mayor, Councilmember Cavalier, first of all, surface water, and we're only talking groundwater, but surface water is subject to prior appropriation, in other words, first in time, first and right. Groundwater under the Arizona Groundwater Management Act does not go with the land.
Okay, well, that's.
It belongs to, to the citizens of the state of Arizona. One of the things in the, the water modeling that was done, and it gets back to that sustainability, we also calculated to the, to the comfort of Adamant that there is enough water, not only for the city of Goodyear, but enough to cover their build-out demand, including a, what's earmarked, sorry, wrong word, what is, what is, I couldn't resist, Mayor, I'm sorry. What's identified in their master plan is 600 acres of heavy industrial. That physical availability of water is there to service both our needs as well as Adamant's needs for 100 years.
Thank you. Okay. Back to, to, to Councilmember Sousa, then Vice Mayor after that, okay? Okay, Councilmember Sousa. Mr. Mayor, I was concerned about what our future water necessities were going to be and how deep we would have to get to get real good potable water. And I asked Mr. Iwansky and Mr. Bradford to meet with me last week, and little did I know that this was going to be on this agenda, but basically I asked the same questions that are coming up this evening. And to me, it is important that this provides us an additional, almost 100-year water, well, better than 100-year water source, for our future, for future deliveries for the expanded population that we anticipate that this city's going to reach. And that's the comfort zone that I wanted in our meeting, and I wanted to tell that, to bring that to the attention of council. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. Vice Mayor? Does this require ACC approval, or it's just considered a private water sale?
It's considered a Bulk Water Delivery Agreement, not subject to ACC approval. Vice Mayor?
No, I mean, I assume state agencies are ADQ and then for tapping the wells and then Maricopa Environmental for building all the lines and everything else.
Mayor, Vice Mayor Antoniak, correct. The well field development for our future supply, transmission line, all the water quality testing, the Maricopa County Department of Environmental Services, ADWR, ADQ, are all going to be part of that permitting process. And if there's anything we're good at, it's permitting.
Some might disagree with that, but maybe in water, in wastewater, we're good at it, I don't know. The, on the delivery, the delivery component related to Lipsco, obviously this alignment sounds like it's quite contingent upon Lipsco putting in a, is it a service delivery line or a sewer line?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, it's, it would be a sewer, sewer line.
And is the assumption that that sewer line would go to a future sewer plant or the current sewer plant? And maybe a loaded question, I'll say it this way. I'd be cognizant of the fact that obviously we're having issues with Lipsco, and I wouldn't want to give tacit endorsement that they may be putting a line in and that we may be partnering with them and therefore they may get approval processes through this council as it relates to any permitting that may exist for a future wastewater treatment plant. I thought you were outbuilding your hall.
Didn't we wake you up?
No, I was very busy. Mayor, Vice Mayor Antoniak, the sewer line, it's our understanding that the sewer line is part of a developer-funded project that's going to be conveying flow into their collection system, not into a proposed wastewater treatment plant. And what we want to do is we want to try.
Not into a proposed wastewater treatment plant. How is this sewer line?
Well, their MEG 208 for their service territory allows them, and they've permitted, not permitted, but planned for two large wastewater treatment plants. One at the existing Palm Valley facility that's a 4-MGD plant today that could go to 8-MGD, and then they have a spot along Saraville and McDowell for another 8-MGD, and that's in their MEG 208. It's our understanding that the sewer line would connect into their collection system. I'm not sure that that flow would be dedicated to a proposed plant, but it's our understanding that would continue to flow into the Palm Valley. But we can confirm that and get back to the council.
Yeah, I'm sorry to say it, I don't mean to muddy up the water here with that issue, but it just, so, anyway, I think, I think, and we can ask for some clarity later, what their rights are in terms of whether they can build a plant and not build a plant and a variety of other issues that exist with them.
And as the Director of Council prior to the break, you had asked that Lipsco come back in the fall for a work session. And actually, we met with city management last week, and we're going to be planning that. And we attended a meeting with Lipsco staff a few weeks ago, so that's in the works, and we want to get them to fulfill their commitment to the city, which is to come back and present to you with their plans. So that's also in the works. Okay? Any other questions?
I have one. I, and I'm not questioning you doing it, I just am sort of surprised that we would take the water from the ground, which is pretty good. In fact, those people up there drink it. And it has nitrates and arsenic. And we're going to put it on a pipe that's going to include sewage from Pebble Creek?
No.
Is that, no? Good, good, okay. No answer required.
Parallel.
Ten, ten feet of horizontal separation.
Yeah. Ten foot horizontal separation.
Ten feet of horizontal separation.
All right, I apologize. Okay, anything, further discussion? Okay. All in favor of the motion? Do we have a motion?
Yes, sure.
Signify by a standing eye, please. Aye. Close, guys have it settled.
Thank you.
Wow. Thank you.
That's what I was worried about.
Your heart pumping.
Okay, would you like to break, or do you want to roll?
Just roll.
Next two items are related to Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park. Karen Craver will present both, and council will take action on each item separately.
Mayor, council, councilmembers, Karen Craver is out ill tonight, so I'll be filling in for you. Mayor, this first item is requested by Duke Realty to rezone 25 acres of land at the southwest corner of Saraville and Delwood Street, from Agriculture District to the General Industrial The subject property is part of a larger 293 acres owned by, originally owned by Duke Realty Limited. Realty Limited Partnership. As you know, Duke recently sold approximately 34 acres of this property to OBP, Goodyear L.C., for the development of the Macy's Bloomingdale's Fulfillment Center. The second item on the agenda is taking the entire 293 acres originally owned by Duke Realty and to rezone the property to include a PAD overlay that I'll discuss in a minute. This initial request for the 25 acres is to rezone it to I-2 to correspond with the existing I-2 zoning that exists on the remaining part of the Duke Realty property. The request to rezone to I-2 General Industrial is consistent with the general plan land use designation for General Industrial. Development will be compatible with the existing adjacent industrial business park development and other surrounding properties. To minimize any potential impacts on Saraval Estates residential development to the northeast, the applicant has proposed within this rezoning request to provide a 100-foot building setback adjacent to Saraval Avenue. In addition, Duke Realty, as part of the previous development agreements, council's approved, will provide the entire 130-foot Elwood Street right-of-way on their property from Saraval to Cotton Lane. Again, the request of general industrial zoning is consistent with the policies of the general plan. Staff's recommending approval of the rezoning for the 25 acres, subject to the stipulations contained in the adopting ordinance. The second item on council's agenda is to then take the entire 293-acre Duke Realty property and apply a final PAD overlay on the acreage for the development of the Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park. The industrial park will provide for a mixture of industrial, manufacturing, employment uses, all permitted within the I-2 zoning district. The applicant is requesting the PAD overlay to allow prospective users and tenants a little bit greater flexibility in the design and development of the individual lots, through some minor deviations from the established development standards within the I-2 zoning district, while establishing specific development standards and design guidelines under the planned area of development that provide unified architecture, signage, and other design elements for the development. The Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park final PAD overlay contains an overall development plan, site development standards and design guidelines, landscape architectural guidelines, building architectural guidelines, and other required elements that you typically see within a planned area of development. The final PAD overlay, again, is consistent with the general plan land use designation for General Industrial on the property, and staff is recommending also approval of the PAD overlay, subject to the stipulations contained in the adopting ordinance. I'll be happy to answer any questions on either application. Mayor, and that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any comments from the public, either on the rezoning of the 25 acres or the PAD on the 293? Okay, I'd like to start with the 25 acres. Ask clerk to read the ordinance to rezone approximately 25 acres.
Mayor, I'm sorry. Vanessa Hickman with Withy Morris.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. If I might, I'm here tonight on behalf of Duke Realty Corporation, and I would just like to thank staff for all of their hard work on this. This has been a process of about a year now on both the 25-acre rezone as well as the PAD. I know some items have come before you in the past. We are excited about this opportunity, Macy's as well. They have a representative here who could answer any questions that you might have, if that's necessary. With that being said, if you do have any further questions for Duke, I'm happy to answer any of those that you might have. And we request that you approve the 25-acre rezone as well as the PAD application. Thank you.
Thank you. I apologize.
No, no, it's fine.
I always ask the applicant, I fail to, my fault.
Certainly, I appreciate you moving it along. It's fine. Thank you.
I should have asked you. Thank you. Further comments? Okay. Clerk, please.
Adopt Ordinance 07-1084, providing for conditional rezoning of 25 acres of property from Agricultural Zoning District to the General Industrial Park Zoning District for an industrial development known as Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park, generally located at the southeast corner of Saraval Avenue and the Elwood Street alignment. Amending supplementary zoning map 07-009 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Can I have a motion?
If we, council adopt ordinance number 07-1084, as read by District Clerk.
Second, motion from Councilmember Sousa and a second from Vice Mayor Antoniak. It's open for discussion.
Councilmember Sousa? Do we know how much warehousing is going to be permitted in these 25 acres? Any of it at all?
Mayor, Councilmember Sousa, I may need the applicant's assistance in that, but I believe on the 25 acres within their overall development plan, these are the smaller lots, one to five acres, as I recall. I would anticipate they can elaborate, but these would not be within the area where we have the large warehousing, but it's probably more light manufacturing.
Okay.
That would be the intended use in that area.
Is that the idea?
Good evening, Mayor. Councilmember Sousa. In the packets is a final plot of subdivision that shows basically what our property division plan is for that. Generally, in that northeast corner, it's a very challenged portion of the site as it's very much in odd shape, and there's some high tension power lines that are going diagonally through that. So what we envision there, it's harder to put the larger rectangular, big warehouse, distribution warehouses on that, and so our vision for that is to have smaller lots, five acres or less, where it would be smaller type, light manufacturing, smaller industrial uses, and not necessarily, you know, what you might think of an industrial park of the bigger warehouse distribution uses.
Fine, thank you. Appreciate it.
Yes, Councilmember Osborne.
My question addresses the comments that came up in planning the zoning in July, and I guess that goes along with the architecture that I believe they were concerned about. When I looked at, in your final PAD overlay, the big book, section 10 shows a very, and that's why I need help, knowing which is which we're looking at, because this page really leaves a lot to be desired, whereas the next page shows a little more depth and pop-out to the building, and then further on, you see a little more of that. And so I just want to clarify that that's what we're going to be seeing and not this first page.
Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, the second graphic is probably more representative. That is the buildings that are, they're going through the review process now, as they call Buildings 1 and 2. The graphic, the first one is Macy's, I believe, which is probably not a very good graphic, I mean, reproduction of it. But obviously, as you get bigger in the buildings, these are very long buildings, particularly the Macy's one, and I don't think the first graphic really does justice to the architecture. But the architecture on the big warehouse buildings is a challenge.
Oh, sure.
To provide the articulation, but I think the second one is much more representative of the architectural quality that you'll see.
Okay. It just, it was a matter of kind of the pop-out effect, whereas this is completely straight, where you could easily have some of that, and so that was my concern. So you're saying these are two, you're showing two different buildings in this. This is Macy's, and this is another, correct?
Yes, that's another.
So I don't like Macy's. That's what we're saying.
Again, I think the graphic that's included in that, I think is kind of washed out.
Showing dimensions.
Right, and I don't think that adjusts it, I think that the building, although it is very large, as you'll see going up.
And I respect that, you know, but there are very simple things that-
There is a different articulation into that building that maybe is not reflected in that graphic.
Mayor, Councilwoman Osborne, I would like to also say, we did hear that message loud and clear at P&amp;Z. The first elevation that you're looking at is the Macy's elevation. The following elevations are Buildings 1 and 2, which were more recently approved. The rest of the buildings that come through the site plan and working with staff will certainly make sure that four-sided architecture is incorporated with all the buildings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, see no further discussion. Craver, hold on.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
I'd like to ask the clerk to read the ordinance to approve the final planned area development overlay.
Ordinance 07-1085, providing for the establishment of a final planned area development overlay on 293 acres of property within the General Industrial Park Zoning District for an industrial development known as Goodyear Crossing Industrial Park, generally located at the southeast corner of Cotton Lane and the Elwood Street alignment. Amending supplementary zoning map number 07-008 to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and pre-abiding for an effective date.
Okay, thank you. The applicant like to comment on this? I think you have. Certainly welcome to say further.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I don't have any further comments unless you have specific questions to address to this application. I'd just like to thank you.
Okay, thank you. Would you have a motion then, please?
Remove the adopt ordinance 07-1085, as read by the Senate Clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord, second from Councilmember Cavalier. Open for discussion. Again, we're talking about the entire pen. Craver, hold on.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Mayor Kavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, thank you. Now move to Tracy, you're up, I believe, on the contracts with Tishler Bice, the development team.
Good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. In December of 2006, council adopted new development impact fees. As part of ongoing discussions with the development community, council directed staff to conduct an EDU study for land use and demand generator issues. In February of 2007, the city issued an RFQ, request for qualifications for an EDU study. Tishler Bice was selected to conduct those studies. The first phase of the study was completed in June 2007, and an information packet was given to the council. The second contract, or, I'm sorry, the first contract tonight is of the second phase of the EDU study. This will be, or this will include a new development impact fee study for the existing pre-annexation Goodyear. The second contract will focus on the Sonoran Valley area, and the reason it's separate is because the first contract occurred before the annexation in Sonoran Valley. The first contract will be paid for through development impact fee studies, or, I'm sorry, through development impact fees and will be divided into the development fee categories. The second contract will be paid for through the Sonoran Valley Development Agreement. Montage Holdings has agreed to reimburse the city for the cost of that study. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you. Any comments, questions from the public? Mr. Gelsner?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I remember reading in the recent newspaper that the Arizona Central Homeowners Association, or an association of builders, was intending to sue the city based on their, on our current and imposed, newly imposed development fees, and I wanted to ask if we, if we were currently being sued, and is this contract as a result of that intent to change the development fees that we had passed for the current state and the future? Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Massey?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as the council's aware, a number of months ago, a notice of claim was filed against the city.
Can you get closer? Be a little awkward. I'll do my stretch move.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, as you're aware, a number of months ago, Valley Partnership did file a notice of claim against the city on our adopted impact fees from last December. To date, Valley Partnership has not filed suit against the city, but a number of weeks ago, approximately three weeks ago, the home builders of central Arizona did file suit against the city on the impact fees. That case is currently pending in the Maricopa County Superior Court, and we had our first hearing approximately a week and a half ago, but that case is proceeding.
Okay, thank you. Anyone from Tishler Bice like to speak, or we'll be on it? Okay. This, okay. Could I have a motion, please?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve two contracts with Tishler Bice, one for a second phase of an EDU study and one for a development impact fee study for the Sonoran Valley area.
So, second. Motion from Vice Mayor Antoniak, second from Councilmember Cavalier. It's open for discussion.
A question is to legal. In view of the lawsuit that is ongoing, what impact would it have on this proposal? I mean, we're, the impact fees are being questioned in court. Should we go forth with this in view of that?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, this, by understanding, the study was underway prior to any suit being filed in the current case. I would recommend you proceed with the current course of action with having the impact, the new impact fee study, especially given the fact that part of that study is in the Sonoran Valley, which is not currently contemplated in our impact fees.
Thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by standing by, please.
Aye.
Posed, I have it 7-0. Okay, we'll now move to an ordinance to rezone 159 acres known as 10-303 Business Park.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If I could, I'd like to refer you to Exhibit C in the attached PAD packet attached to the COAC, and I'll begin by providing you with some background information about the site as well as those surrounding it.
Exhibit C?
Correct. It's indicated on the side here. The, the subject property being considered for a rezoning tonight is about 159 acres and is located on the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Cotton Lane. The request is for a rezone from agriculture to a final PAD of what would be primarily industrial uses and some flexibility for flex industrial as well. And provide you some, just to provide you with some, briefly some contextual information about the property, the area surrounding this 159 acres is vastly vacant, but there are several going through the entitlement process. Many have been entitled so far, at least through the rezoning phase. The property directly to the north, owned by Via West, is the Palback 303 Business Park Project, and a site plan for the first phase of that development has recently been approved, and that would be for two warehouse buildings. Directly across to the east is the SunCorps Development, once known as Premier West One, now known as Palm Valley 303, I believe. To the, to the south is largely vacant, primarily agricultural uses, and of course, here at the southwest corner of Indian School and Cotton Lane is the former Duncan Farms property. Directly to the west is a proposal for, I should say, a rezoning proposal has been submitted for that property for what would be a primarily a commercial and office development, and that would be Able Commercial Ventures as the owner. And directly to the, the west and a little bit north is Talavertia Estates, which is a proposed large lot residential project. Preliminary plat for that property was approved well over a year ago. And as I mentioned, the applicant is proposing a, is requesting a final PAD zoning approval of what would be primarily mixed industrial uses. I'm going to refer you to page eight of the attached PAD packet again. These would primarily be the uses that would be allowed within this PAD, and let me just guide you through the columns real quick, and I'll refer you, I'll refer to one of the maps. That kind of phases everything out, as you see here, the uses are indicated on the far left. Should mention that this property is located within the sixty-five LDN of the Luke Air Force Base. There are some restrictions for properties that are located within the accident potential zone. As per section twenty-eight of the Arizona revised statutes, the applicant has listed here those uses that would be allowed and not allowed under that provision, the revised statutes. And at this point, I'll refer you to section, I should say, exhibit G in the PAD packet. And the applicant will basically be dividing this project into three parcels, or you could say three phases. The first phase, of course, will be the, the infrastructure improvements that are necessary for this project. Parcel one, and this is, these uses are, proposed uses are indicated in that matrix I showed you earlier, will primarily consist of flex industrial uses, which may include a little bit of commercial. Parcel two will be primarily light industrial and office type uses and incidentally, this is the parcel that's closest to the Talaverty Estates Residential Project. And parcel three would be the, the last phase of this development will, which will consist of primarily general industrial as well as warehouse distribution type uses. Staff is recommending approval based on the fact that this is consistent with the policies in the general plan and the interest of Luke Air Force Base as well and subject to those eighteen stipulations that you see before you. And with that, I'll conclude my comments. Dustin Jones is here representing the applicant as well.
Okay, thank you, opportunity for the applicant.
Mr. Mayor and council, Dustin Jones, twenty-five twenty-five East Camelback, but soon to be located at twenty-nine forty North Litchfield Road in the city of Goodyear. Very proud to announce that. Good to have you all back today. Also like to note, it's, it's nice to be back, although I, I watch the council meetings at times on the internet, you don't have the same effect as sitting in front of Gary Gelsner and getting the commentary throughout the entire meeting. It's, it's like clicking on the commentary button on a DVD as you're watching it. You don't get that when you're watching it on the computer at home. So, welcome back, Gary Gelsner as well. I can't add much more to staff's presentation. Farhad, as he always does, does a very thorough job in going through and working with us. We worked on this project for about a year. From the very beginning, I'm here with my client, Ryan Titeman with Mountain West Industrial Properties and we went and met with Luke Air Force Base from the very beginning of this project. I alerted to him that this project was, was near and dear to me as a former member of the general planning advisory committee here in the city and with the mayor and the vice mayor as well, we sat on that committee and one of the primary charges that we had was making sure we protected Luke Air Force Base. This property is right in the heart of that Luke Air Force compatibility area and so as we put together the application, wanted to make sure that all of the uses that would be proposed in the PAD would be consistent with the city's vision for developing industrial, developing employment, but obviously consistent with compatibility of Luke Air Force Base. So, all of the uses that you see in the matrix, we worked with our, our consultant, Anthony Sumner, who's with, who's, who's with Sandbox Development, is also with me here tonight. We worked with our client to put together the application, put together a matrix that would allow for the types of uses that would be consistent with the accident potential zone, which is, runs right over the property, as well as the, the market and the need for the area. So, the application is before you, again, we, we appreciate staff's recommendation approval. Meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission, there was a stipulation that was added with respect to a wall adjacent to the residential. You also note that staff included a stipulation, stipulation number seventeen, that requires that if there are any users larger than two hundred and fifty thousand square feet adjacent to the residential, that a use permit come back before both the planning commission and the city council to address the compatibility next to the residential and we support that stipulation as well. So, appreciate your time and encourage the council to recommend, or to approve this case as well. Thank you.
Comments from the public? If you see none, ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title only please.
Ordinance oh seven one oh eight two, providing for conditional rezoning of one hundred and fifty-nine acres of land from the agricultural district to the final planned area development district to allow for development known as ten three oh three Business Park, generally located at the northwest corner of Indian School Road and Cotton Lane. Amending supplementary zoning map oh six six one three to provide for the change in zoning, providing separability and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, could I have a motion?
I move we adopt ordinance zero seven one zero eight two as read by the city clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Lord and the second from Vice Mayor Antoniak, it's open for discussion. Councilmember Osborne?
One of my great P and Z questions I always ask when it is development next to residential, do we have signage for the incoming homes that showing that there would be an industrial site for those residents abutting?
Mr. Mayor, Commissioner Osborne, I don't believe we do have any provision.
I mean, a lot of times we ask for that to be, you know.
There is however signage indicating the, the boundaries of the sixty-five LDN, as far as any industrial developments are concerned, I don't know where.
Okay, so we could go ahead and stipulate that, that there be a sign so that future homeowners know that they will be potentially being, building their home next to industrial site?
We may include that as a stipulation.
Make that motion, add the stipulation.
Never done it in this section.
Just specify where you'd like it, what, what area.
See, I don't know where the roads go.
Is it the NBA Enterprises property that's got the estates?
The estates?
Is that right? Is it the yellow section that's got the housing?
This is the residential.
Yeah. What's that?
So, the question would be, Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Osborne, is where on our property the ten fifty residential fires here? Anywhere on the northernmost, most, mostly supposed to be accessing off of Camelback, along Indian School, they drive by it. We could spend somewhere in this area.
Well, I just think that it would be appropriate to let new homeowners know what's coming around and they don't always look to find out what's coming.
Future industrial business park, something.
We've, we've done for future.
Circle real estate site? Is there not a roadway that's going to be between your two properties?
There's no problem.
No. Between the, between. That's a roadway, okay, but there's no, take your pen further north, Dustin, that line. Is there no roadway there? No, it's just wall to wall. That's what, is that what you're getting at, John?
Yes, yes.
Who would see it?
And there's going, there would be an eight foot wall there, put up most likely by the residential developer when they put in the subdivision. So, I don't think anyone's going to look over the wall to see.
It's just good neighbors, that's, that's all. Everything else seems fine, so it's just, you know, being neighborly.
I don't think there are any criminal.
Bring that up.
Joanne and I remember that case.
Before I ask for the amendment to the motion, are there any other comments, questions? Okay, or do you just want to agree to do it?
Agreed to do it.
Is that all right?
Mr. Mayor, if I may, I should address a comment further. The Talaverty Estates project is yet to come in for a final plat approval. We may consider including a stipulation on there to maybe include a phrase in the public report that there'd be.
Our salespeople needs to hold on, yes.
Okay, so then Dustin, you've agreed without a stipulation to include a sign, future site of industrial business park or something.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
On your property.
On our property and sounds as though staff will.
Yeah, and then on the next thing, yeah.
On the plat require that the neighbors are advised that we're located there as well and we'll both be good neighbors.
That's good.
Thank you.
Good, good thought. Okay, further comments? Okay, let's see. Could I have a roll call vote please?
Vice Mayor Antoniak.
Aye.
Councilmember Sousa.
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier.
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne.
Aye.
Councilmember Holland.
Aye.
Councilmember Lord.
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh.
Aye.
Pass seven zero.
Okay, we'll now move to the last item on our agenda and that's the resolution to negotiate condemnation. Negotiate or condemn property interest for Van Buren widening project. And Sarah Chilton.
Mayor Cavanaugh, Vice Mayor Antoniak, councilmembers, it's nice to see you again. I'm bringing forward this COAC asking for authorization to, to negotiate a purchase price based on an appraisal for some property that we need for certain public projects in the city and if the negotiations fail to file a condemnation action. What we'll be looking at condemning or purchasing, hopefully purchasing, is a swath, a little strip of land that's about a one point five, oh five acres right along Van Buren, which is needed for the Van Buren widening. Currently, we have improvements there under an agreement with property owner. It's like a temporary right of entry, but we haven't been able to agree on a price for that particular piece of real estate and we need to just move forward.
How big was it again?
The little, the little swath that we're getting is one point oh five acres right along here.
Got it.
And this is for the Van Buren widening project. In addition, we've discovered that we have to do some channelization of wash property in order to stabilize the bridge that's being constructed over Bullard Wash. So, we needed to acquire some of the wash for this channelization. Because the wash channelization is part of the Maricopa County Bullard Wash project that were slated to begin construction in two thousand and eleven, our outside council suggested we take the entire piece at this point to avoid having multiple condemnation actions if they're necessary. So, what we're looking to condemn in terms of the Bullard Wash is the section in between these dotted lines. The blue area is all floodway, which can be developed. The green is flood plain, which can be developed, however it's subject to bringing it out of, out of the flood, flood plain. One of the, as you can see, the, the alignment for this wash is pretty much down the natural wash channel, the floodway. This was an issue that had risen earlier with this property owner. Initially, this project had been designed so that the Bullard Wash channel improvements, which will include a linear park, was going to be located and originally designed so it'd run up against the back of the Centerra development and then leave all of the property on the other side as being developed. The property that's located as, identified as twenty-three right here, part of it had been sold, so there was change in ownership and different, different interests. The people that, who own the property that we want to condemn, SASS or LLP, didn't want the realignment. So, we said, well, we'll revisit this and try to keep it in the original floodway, which the engineers have done a pretty good job of aligning it down that floodway. So, about this much of it will be immediately channelized for the Bullard Avenue Bridge and then later when we begin the whole channelization project for the Bullard Wash project with the county, it'll take it all the way down. We have an appraisal, the appraised value for these, the interest that we would be acquiring, which is the section for, along Van Buren for the Van Buren widening and then the wash and then also a temporary construction easement that would allow us to go on to part of their, part of the property owner's property to complete the channelization, is four hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars. We have the appraisal and if authorized, we'll send out the letter making the offer to purchase it from it. We have funds in the Van Buren Street project for this acquisition. We have to give them twenty days. If they either reject or don't respond within twenty days, we can move forward legally with a condemnation action and that's what we're asking for authority for.
Okay. Comments from the public? Ask the clerk to read the resolution by title only please.
Resolution oh seven one one seven eight, authorizing acquisition by negotiation or condemnation of property interest needed for the Van Buren Street widening project and for the Bullard Wash channel improvements project.
Okay, could I have a motion?
I move that we adopt resolution zero seven dash one one seven eight as read by the clerk.
Second. Motion from Councilmember Cavalier and a second, uh, Councilmember Holland and a second from Councilmember Cavalier, it's open for discussion.
If I may, are we changing the channelization of that at all? It's the same channel, but is this the natural channel?
It's pretty much the natural channel. What we tried to do, you know, I don't, right now I guess it's tailwatering, so I don't know what you would consider nat, nat, a natural channel, but what we tried to do was locate this within the blue area, which is floodway as designated by the federal government. So, we've tried to minimize taking any developable property, which they've done a good job in doing.
Thank you. What's the size of that remnant piece that's on the west side of the board, Wash then?
Oh.
How many acres will that be? Between the houses that maybe thought they were going to front the park and may now front, or back, I should say.
I think that entire piece, I've got the appraisal, let me grab it.
We've got, we've got Centerra residents that maybe thought they were going to back toward Wash, is that what I heard you say?
Well, no, that was the original design, but on the general plan, the general plan has that, designates that as being developed as medium to high density. So, we are not sure that, it, we, we don't believe it can be developed as medium to high density because of access issues on and off of Van Buren, but that's what it's designated on the general plan, so I'm not sure. And it may have been a disclosure that the Centerra residents, you know, were required to make at the time.
But currently it's zoned ag.
Pardon?
Currently zoned as ag.
Yes.
So, there's no.
But the property owner's intent is to develop it as medium to high density as some of the council members have heard.
Oh, yeah.
Are very aware.
Yes, we are.
The larger parcel is.
Minus apartment complex, it's kind of what it is.
The largest, the larger parcel is twenty-seven acres. And so, we're taking twelve of that, because right where the wash is.
So fifteen, so fifteen will remain.
Right where the wash is, that's probably around their property line, that's what they tried to do.
I need some clarification on that. This, this green area is not park area?
No, that's floodway. The, in between these, what we tried to do and the reason the picture is this way is to show you.
The, the green area, that's your flood plain.
Flood plain.
Flood plain would be your floodway.
And that was just to show the difference, because you can actually develop in flood plain, but you can't really develop in the floodway. So, you can take measures to bring flood plain and bring it, elevate it, so you can develop it.
Then we'd be putting high-density housing between Bullard Wash and the Centerra housing.
Well, that's, that's what the general plan reflects, that's an aspiration, but I don't know that it's feasible to do that with the setback requirements or the access requirements that we're, we're going to need. I mean, that is the position that the property owner has always taken, is that they have enough to develop. They have never been able to bring us a plan that was feasible to show us how that would work. But that's clearly their intent.
So, they have to bring that plan to us?
Yes.
For us to either say yes or no.
Yes. And, and then the, the linear park would be within the dotted lines.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Well, Sarah, what you said, regarding the widening of Van Buren Street, it's just that small section at the top of the greenway?
Yes, there's one, one point oh five acres, just right there. That runs the length of Van Buren.
But this is not an afterthought, we've been at widening Van Buren for quite some time.
Right, and we received authorization and permission from the property owner to go ahead with the Van Buren Street widening. We thought we had the same agreement with respect to the channelization. We thought we had the same agreement with respect to the channelization, but when we, when it came time to, you know, execute the documents, we sent them the same documents that we did, they refused to execute that. So, we had to resort to the condemnation and the appraisal process and do all of that.
Really, what you, what you're saying is negotiations have been ongoing?
We never appraised the entire section of the wash. Negotiations had been ongoing to acquire this section, because we had an appraisal.
That's what we're hearing. That had been ongoing.
Right, and we had received authorization for that in connection with the Van Buren Street widening. We've come back for authorization to acquire that property, but in light of having to get the wash property, we thought we'd just do it on one, one proceeding, one piece of litigation and move forward with it.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm not sure, I, the 455,000 is for what?
All of it.
That's all, meaning 1.05 acres plus?
That's 12.95 plus the temporary construction easement.
Now, is Bruce Hillby, is that associated with SASSR, or is there...
Yes, it's Bruce Hillby, and I think Dick Wilson is also a partner in that.
So, SASSR is a person.
Now, I don't know what SASSR is. It's called SASSR LLP.
But it's Bruce Hillby.
It's Bruce Hillby and Dick Wilson are the, are... I don't think Rick West is in that.
No, West isn't.
No, he's in the commercial project.
This is the piece that spun off to another, I think there's a third party beyond just the two that you talked about.
With most of their partnerships, they have a number of partners, and usually they're just the general partners, and I think, and I don't know enough about that legality to know if that's the case here.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
That small section on, on Van Buren, we do have an appraisal on that?
Yes, we have an appraisal. What we did was, we got everything appraised because we had disputes over it.
So, we know what figure we're looking at?
Yes, this is what we're, we're offering in our, in our offer letter. Then it'll be up to them to come back and, you know, counter, which of course we bring to you, to see if there's any justification, or just proceed with a condemnation.
Okay, could I have a motion, please? Got a motion, I think, yes. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sousa?
Aye.
Councilmember Cavalier?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Holland?
Aye.
Councilmember Lord?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Antoniak?
Aye.
Mayor Cavanaugh?
Aye.
Pass 7-0.
Okay, comments, commendations, or report on current events by mayor and council members. Vice Mayor.
Just, well, maybe not a report, but something I've been hearing about for water staff that may be listening in the back, or if not, maybe you can pass along. The very same odor issue that we've had in the neighborhoods north of I-10 related to the wastewater treatment plant, Gold Canyon is also experienced in the same type of water treatment facility owned by the same company. So, that's maybe staff to investigate that and understand what's going on with that. It also might bring heightened awareness in terms of what's going on. And there he comes. So, but, but I have a feeling our Apache Junction brethren that have jurisdiction in Gold Canyon may have heard some of the same complaints, and would be challenged in some of the very same fashions that we are as it relates to the wastewater treatment plant.
Correct. It's staff's understanding that the, that the service provider out in Gold Canyon had the same issues that they're having here with the, with the Palm Valley facility. It's also under, based off a commentary we see from, from their staff, they've been able to overcome the issues that they've had in, in Gold Canyon and rectify the situation.
They have?
That's what they've confirmed to us.
Okay. I, I, again, not confirmed, but I had understood that it was the very same company and the very same management that was having challenges investing in the same technology that we need out here.
Correct.
Okay.
Just want to say, you know, looking throughout the community, that the entry signs are being erected, and some comments about that, and, you know, many of us, the entire city receives the Focus Magazine, and I don't know how much attention we pay to it. And I hope, I hope we do, because it's, I, I think it's a very impressive publication, and that Paula and her staff should be complimented about this publication, because it is very, very professional, and, and the publishing business years ago, I think it's a tremendous piece of literature and the use of photography. It's an excellent presentation, and I hope the citizens enjoy it. And I want to just want to point, you know, we've had the baseball youngsters here today, and just want to say that Cleveland Indians in the Central Division are two and a half games ahead.
Okay. Yeah, thank you. Manager summary of events and follow-up actions.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council, once again, welcome back and welcome through, for completing your first session back, and look forward to keeping you busy. I do have a couple of announcements. One is, is speaking of Cleveland Indians, Councilmember Sousa, just as a reminder, reminder to council and public, is we are going to have our groundbreaking on September 17th out at the site at 10 o'clock, so we look forward to your involvement, look forward to the citizens being out there as well. It's going to be a great event. Second announcement, just to thanks once again to the Information Technology Systems Group for getting us hooked up live with our Citizens Mobile tonight, so if you're listening, welcome, but, Hi Mobile, but also thanks to our, our technol, IT staff for getting that done. And the last thing, we're a little crowded tonight, so I do have some, an update on where we're at with the city center process. This Friday, we will be posting the RFQ and the RFP for city center, and what that means is the RFP will be for the Performing Arts Center, portion of the city center, and the RFQ will be released at the same time, and that will be for the entire 40 acres, what we're calling the P3, or Public Private Partnership. So, the advertising, the posting comes out this Friday. They will be open for developers to pick up on the 17th of September, and we go on from there. So, it is moving, and we look forward to getting our responses. Mr. Mayor, that's all I have for announcements.
Okay, was there any action?
Mr. Mayor, I had a couple of action items that I noted here. One is, is for staff to follow up with electronic sign northbound on Pebble Creek Parkway. So, we will be posting that out there. Thank you, Mr. Gelzer. The other is, I had for disclosures for Talavertia Estates. We just want to make sure that in the future, we will be having disclosures with the 65 LDN as well as the industrial, so I wanted to make that note. And then the other one, Vice Mayor, I picked up, that will just monitor the situation in Gold Canyon with that particular situation. We'll just monitor.
Compare notes.
There you go. Mr. Mayor, that's, that's all I have.
Inquiries of staff? Okay, just last comment, you know, it's a tough subject tonight, Duke, the water, the condemnation, and a couple items on the consent. Good job. Really, good job, staff. Okay.